... If you'd all stand and salute the flag with me. Sorry.
I'll do the flag for you. You can do the invitation. Place your hand over your heart and follow me at the flag. Flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All by your heads. Heavenly Father, thank you for being with us this evening. Please watch over our decision making. Make sure it's in the best interest of all parties involved. And for those of us who aren't here, may we have a speedy trip to get here, but not get a ticket. Amen.
All right.
I don't insure you. I don't care. Okay. We'll call them out.
Director Arthur Perry.
Here.
Assistant Secretary Robert Uten.
Here.
Secretary Arlene Schaefer.
President.
And President Michael Schaefer.
Here. And the record reflects that the Vice President Jim Ferryman is not here. Announcement of any late communications, Scott?
None, Mr. President.
Any ceremonial matters?
No, Mr. President.
We'll go through the consent calendar. Anything to discuss? Before we do that, let's open it up for public comments. I'm sorry. Seeing no one from the public here, we'll go ahead and close public comments. Now we'll go to the consent calendar. Questions or anything? Would you like to take action on that?
Go for approval.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the consent calendar discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four to zero with one absence. Sorry, slow scroller. Move right to the general manager's report, Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item one is review of the midyear budget for this year 2017-15 with Steve Hodges as our primary finance manager of the year.
Good evening, Mr. Hodges.
Good evening. I just spoke to him multiple times today and he said, "Hey, I'm not going to talk about that." So, just kidding.
Sorry, bud. That ain't gonna fly.
So, as you guys saw on the consent items, we had the past three-year deadline for the meeting's review, which is for regulars to live in the nationalized fund. So, we asked for the $33,000 appropriation to get us back theoretically even. Otherwise, our budget were looking pretty solid. We're showing zeros for salary savings. But I actually think we are gonna have, sorry, I actually think we are gonna have salary savings as zeros. And why that's important is the cost of living adjustment. We budgeted at 2.5 percent for next year. And based on what CPI is projecting, it looks like it's gonna be at least a percent higher, which equates to about 20 grand. So, with your guys' approval, we'll come back. But we will have potential savings to carry over to cover that.
Questions for Steve?
I have a question that's kind of off the wall. With this new tax law, the federal tax law, does that help the employees with their take home pay?
It should have. This last paycheck, you guys should have seen the difference. With everything how it comes down to the degree, you should have seen your take home pay go up a little bit.
I'm talking about the employees.
Be everybody now.
Okay.
Everybody.
Okay. Okay, I was just hoping it would, so it kicked in this month?
Correct.
Good. Okay. Anything else? Any other questions for Steve? The hook easy, bud.
Thank you.
I mean, new guys should be on the hot seat, right? Especially when you're a Padres man. I mean, you should be.
Well, and I messed up two checks. I'll just say that no one's here, but the apparel checks are locked on the bottom safe and I can't get in. The battery is dead. So, today was not a good day for me.
Would these be two guys that earn on direct deposit?
Yeah.
Just saying.
Alone from Bob, right?
Just saying.
Just kidding.
Okay. All right.
No problem.
Anything else for us?
That's all I got.
Got it. All right. Scott?
Thank you, Mr. President. So, item number two is to consider my 2018 performance goals, which are attached in your staff report. Last Tuesday, President Schaefer and I met to discuss the goals. We did not have any changes, so the goals before each are the ones being recommended. But if you have any suggestions to revise any goals, add any goals, now's the time to do it and be more than happy to accommodate those requests.
Do you want to mention about goal number four now?
That's what I was gonna say. That's my point.
We did change number four Tuesday.
To what? To two?
No, unfortunately, we had an SSO on January. So, the original goal was zero SSOs in 2018. Well, obviously, that goal cannot be achieved. So, it's no more than one. So, hopefully, we'll have no more SSOs the remainder of the year.
That doesn't give you much flexibility, though.
That's okay, but that's still, that's what we want to achieve.
That's your goal.
Yeah, absolutely.
I was gonna try to raise it to two, but, okay.
We'll leave it at that.
One's fine.
No more than that. Scott, I had a good discussion about them and I'm very pleased with what's been developed. I think it fits very well into what we've been doing the last few years and gives some direction that'll, I think, be pretty significant. We talked a little bit about goal number 10, low-income assistance program for CMSD customers. I'm very interested in that, like I told you the other day, and looking forward to seeing that, what you come up with that. I think, again, our social consciousness in this community may get questioned by some other leaders, but I think we need to continue to do those things that help our right peers.
Can I talk about that?
Yeah, go ahead.
What did you have in mind for assistance for the low-income?
Well, go ahead.
I've seen other recommendations where people could prove that they're low-income and then they need a break on the rates. What I have no idea at this point. My vision was, you know, we're gonna have to do a study, a survey study. We are projecting the rate will go up either to, is the law to do a study. My final is, in that study, the consultant can help us determine what would be the appropriate rate for normal.
That rate would be collected over the tax bill, is that correct?
Yes, correct.
So, you would lower the tax bill, possibly?
Correct.
And they'd have to come up with pretty good proof that they're low-income and all the other, you know.
Well, yeah, I think it's a program that we really probably shouldn't consider, you know, without more explanation. When Rob and I, or Rob, I believe hired a consultant that did a study, a very extensive study, of what the rates should be. And I don't think we can necessarily take liberty, you know, with one particular class, even though I may be in that, well, I probably may, I'm not in income in that class, but I'm older. But why shouldn't older people get a break? Or why shouldn't, you know, there's a whole different bunch of categories that the consultant talked about. And we decided that, we decided on a program. And I think we ought to go back and review that. There was a lot of discussion about, you know, breaking it out even further and giving different rates to certain classes. And we decided we would follow the consultant's recommendation. So, I'm not, I'm not in favor of starting to chip away at that.
I think, Mr. President, I think Director Uten's brought up a good point. There's, it certainly would be something had to be looked into. There's been some attempts to give senior citizen rates and with Prop 21, it has to be justified. It's usually justified by taking money in a city out of the general fund to subsidize.
But can't we, I'm not sure where I'd fall yet on reducing rates for low-income people, but can't we come up with programs that can help them? You know, they get smacked at their, twice a year with their property tax bill. Can't we look at ways to spread that out or let them make payments or, I mean, it doesn't have to be just rate decreases.
You know, we have a very good system and the tax collector collects the money. I don't think we want to get into individual billing for these, for any one particular class.
That's turned over to the county for collection.
Yeah, I understand that.
Is this something that we could put into our new committee that have them look at it too and recommend?
I think we need to stay on top of it first and see which direction you want to go.
Be aware of it.
Well, we don't want to have them say, "Let's do it," and then we can't do it. You know what I mean? I take Bob's position.
They would just be recommending.
I know, but.
They have no power.
I know, but I think we should stay on top of it ourselves first.
Yeah, but I think as a goal for Scott to at least get us the information to look at. And Bob, if it goes back to that consultant work that you've talked about.
Yeah.
I never saw it, so I'd like to see it again. At least I don't remember ever seeing it.
Well, Rob, do you remember? We did a rate study maybe seven or eight years ago.
Yes, we did. And there are other classes, so.
Yeah, there are many other classes that we could have considered. And some of the public wanted us to consider them.
All right. Anything, any other concerns or if you have anything that needs to be changed?
And number five, could we put a timeline on that?
By the end of the year.
Well, a different timeline than a year. A shorter timeline. Like.
What do you have in mind, Director?
Like in the fall or sometime. I mean, time is not necessarily the essence, but 2020 is not too far around the corner. And my suspicion is that the programs that we have now aren't going to get as much above 61%, 62%. So, there's a lot to go, that has to go into this. We were discussing, maybe we shouldn't do, maybe we should do nothing because the city, we're such a low percentage of what the city's total trash tonnage is, we can't move the dial very much by ourselves. So, I think the discussion should be, well, I think, I think, I think time is of the essence to make the plan. And the plan could be do nothing. Or the plan could be achieve 75%. The goal was originally, I think, 90%. That doesn't seem feasible anymore. 75% does not seem feasible anymore. So, maybe we can redo that to determine how much we're going to achieve. What is our goal to, what is our real goal? It could be 75%. I think that CRNR can eventually develop, it's going to have to, and every trash company is going to have to develop means of getting everybody to 75%. Although generally, there's no consequences for not doing anything.
Unless the state changes.
There's still some cities that are 50% and the state hasn't done anything to them.
I'm not sure my thinking is straight. But this says develop a plan to divert 75% away from landfills. Is that our total diversion rate?
Yes.
Thinking, I was thinking of it in kind of a different vein, but, so you'd feel more comfortable, Bob, with a time?
Well, a time to decide whether we're gonna stick with 75%. And then if we are, the second time to develop the plan for how we're gonna get there. Basically, CRNR is gonna have to do it for us. If that's the plan, that's what I'd like to know.
That makes sense to you.
Yeah, if you want, if there's a specific timeline, if you want it done by?
July and August. I do, I'm on vacation a lot in July and August, so.
Let's do it in July and August.
Let's do it in July and August, Scott.
How about September?
Let's take a look at the end of September then, Scott.
Sure. Well, yeah.
Just so we can have discussions if we're gonna be able to proceed or, you know.
If there's something that we have to do, made, something major, time's getting away.
Okay.
We're less, we're less than two years from the goal. I mean, from the state mandating.
And we've told the public.
And if we wait till the end of the year, we can't do much in a year.
Okay.
Looks good.
I also would like to make some actions on board to move the.
Move for approval?
Second.
Motion is second. Any other discussion on it?
Now, have you talked to Scott about, well, go ahead, do your vote first.
Yeah. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four to zero with one absence.
Have you had a meeting with Scott about financial renegotiation?
About his performance review?
Right.
We'll do that in March, right? Your actual performance review, we'll have that, we'll have that to you by the study session, maybe.
Do we have a closed session for that before we?
Well, he and I will talk first.
Okay, and then you'll come back to us?
Then we'll come back right out and we come back to closed session after the, after the, Scott might meet.
I thought you came.
I did.
Usually you negotiate after you've given authority by the board in closed session.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we do that before he meets. We give him the authority.
Can we, can we do that at the, at the next study session?
You'll need Alan here.
That's true.
Yeah, we need, yeah.
Go do it at the next board meeting.
Normally supposed to give rates at regular meeting, but that won't be giving the authority in the closed session. That's.
Yeah, I mean, we can, we can do the closed session in March. You give directions to President Schaefer and then we can, you can meet again in April. That's fine. My big, I was getting the goal because I want to get started on it now.
Right.
So, that's, that's fine with me.
Yeah, this is kind of separate.
Yeah, okay, but I just want to know the timing of it.
And the board makes it retroactive to the.
Right, we make it retroactive.
Yeah.
But we should probably put that on the agenda for March.
Got it. Okay.
Well, if there's anything retroactively to give.
Or take away.
Take away, yeah. Goes both ways, right?
His anniversary date is in January.
Yeah, so it'd be retroactive.
But we're, you know, we're imposing on him as it is.
Okay, very good. All right. Engineers' report, Rob.
Thank you, Mr. President and board members. Item one is our project status report. We finished a couple of projects. One was phase nine of the grade fives. Second one was our President Force Main. That's in another agenda item. And we are moving along on the yard.
I drove by this morning. They knocked down part of the wall or is it, what's the, where are they right now?
They, they are doing everything at one time. So, they're, they've knocked down part of the wall. They have, they're building the wall. They're doing a little bit of the curbs, reforming the curbs to allow the wall to go in and the gate. So, they've relocated the fuel tank and everything's going on at one time. This is a, for, for a contractor like GCI, this is more of a small fun project. They're used to pipeline and pump station kind of work, and this is a little bit of everything. So, it's going very well.
When you talk about the curbs, you talk about the curbs on the street?
On-site curbs. They are closing the Fairview driveway. We swapped the, putting the rolling gate at Fairview, we moved it over to Wilson because the, we had not let the trucks go out the Fairview exit and they were bottoming out and we didn't know it until we were under construction. So, it would, we would have had to lower the pavement and take out a lot and regrade. So, we moved the rolling gate over to the Wilson side and we're gonna close off the Fairview side. And actually, the crew likes that better. So, that went well. And everything else is working out, too.
Do you have to get city approval to change those plans or?
We did that. We went up there to the city that day and had it cleared by the public works person. And then we submitted to the outside plan checker the next day and they approved it the next day. So, it took like two days to get it approved. We're very fortunate with that.
Yeah, it's very good.
Rising. Okay. Any, so no more comments? Thank you. Moving on to number two, these are two RBH projects. The first one is both addresses 410 E 17th Street and 1714 Tustin. That's owned by Denise Johnston, who is known as the Cat Defender. She is, has a little society for the protection of cats. And we just did a little survey for her. She's gonna rent out the part of the facility. The second one was 925 West 18th Street. That's Bo Swain's locker.
And dribble.
And they are going to erect the new building, remove the existing and construct a new building. And the architect is one of the Commodores for the, one of the yacht clubs.
Dan's been talking about that for a long, long time. And when he took over that business, I think from his dad?
Could be.
Yeah, he talked about making that change for a long, so it's, it's good for him. It's good for the west side, too.
And then item three on the agenda is President Pump Station. Force Main is complete, in place. Everything is working fine, the new force main. We did this, this is our third project in a row. We did bi-hor horizontal directional drilling. Saved us quite a bit of money and time and headache. And everything is complete. They've repaved the streets and Force Main's operating properly. So, items one, two, and three are the standard procedure we take for accepting improvements.
Move approval?
Second.
Now, on your motion, is that for all three item files?
Yes.
Okay. Our, all together. Okay. Motion and a second to approve the recommended action. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four to zero, one absence.
Thank you, Mr. President and board member.
Mark's not, Mark is apparently on vacation.
Mr. Davis is on vacation. His replacement could not be here tonight. She has a sick child to attend to, so, so no reports tonight, so we're fine.
Counselor, anything for you this evening, sir?
See you a little later in the evening, but this is maybe just reminding the board when they go to send out some things that in addition to AB 1234 train, they have a new sexual harassment train that has to be undertaken by board members now to receive compensation. So, you have to learn for that when you're having those opportunities.
I think everyone's up to date on sexual harassment, aren't they?
No.
Oh, no? One person isn't?
I have noticed from Nalani that I should look into it.
Oh, I'm ahead of the game, kid. I've done.
So, you're clean.
Nalani, is that the one I just completed?
Yes.
Okay.
I think, I think my time has expired on whatever, so.
We're always there.
Okay.
It's difficult to get into the program. It took me like a month and I had to call Diana again and she had to reset my password. I recommended Arlene that she comes in here to do it because it was difficult.
They can, we can use that room that we, right? That probably, you're right, Art, I think that's probably the easiest thing.
I think it'd be easiest.
Bring our own computers or?
No.
No, the one in the.
She can set you up and she knows how to get into the passwords.
We're so used to CSDA having the conference and having it there. It's so much easier.
Do they have those at the conferences, Alan? Those sexual harassment?
I've seen them offered by the organizations. I don't know if they've made the part of this conference program, but they should. I've seen them offered separately.
They have, they have done them, yeah. So.
Good.
Thanks, Alan. And we'll see you in a few minutes. Local meetings? Bob, you're meeting from OCST? Is Jim's not here?
The Orange County San District, the main meeting is next week. Fourth Wednesday is next Wednesday.
And no SARFA meetings?
No SARFA meeting this month.
ISDOC Executive Committee, one of the, probably the most major thing that was discussed was that dues for every agency in ISDOC are $50 now. Everyone will be picking up their, whatever it was before. John Williams reported that Colin McGregor, Colin McGregor was re-elected to the last, was it Colin, right? Derek.
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 Derek McGregor was re-elected chair. And apparently, there's a battle for the vice chair between Dr. Bernstein and Cheryl Brothers from Fountain Valley. Apparently, it's not a pleasant battle either, from what I understand.
Cheryl Gotti.
Oh, Cheryl Gotti.
Oh, yeah, good.
It's interesting, I'm just gonna kind of, it's really interesting at ISDOC because if you look at the board of the executive committee, there's only one representative who's not a member of the water district. And that's me.
Is that right?
So, I don't know if you've noticed this, but you're not on the executive.
No, no, I'm just.
But you're there. But, you know, we get a lot of stuff on water districts at ISDOC.
Absolutely.
And I guess they have all the money, so they can do that.
You could be a member of a water district.
I could. I prefer this district, though. I have an affinity to it. The other thing that was really interesting, Phil Anthony, who is on Metropolitan Water District, right? Or no.
OCOG.
Yeah, but what's his elected, is it Orange County Water District? Nobody can find him. He's like disappeared. Doesn't answer his emails, get returned. Nobody knows what his health condition is. And I'm the alternate for OCOG for ISDOC, so I guess I'm gonna start getting to go to OCOG meetings, which are such a pleasure. And Nalani's already sent it out, but March 22nd is the OCOG General Assembly at the Grand Californian Hotel. And the other thing was Marnie Permer, who's the executive of OCOG, mentioned that there are a ton of grants available through OCOG. And I don't know if that's anything we've ever explored, Scott?
I think they're mainly transportation grants and.
Are they?
Land use planning grants, but it wouldn't hurt to check.
She was pretty, she didn't really say that, but she mentioned there were a lot, there's a lot of money available for grants. That might help with the Citizens Advisory Committee if we could get some grant money to help with that, maybe? Okay. And that was, that was pretty much it.
What else? Oh, did you talk about, did you talk about? The dues went out for the association. That was a big thing, about the $50.
Yeah, I just said that.
You said that? I was listening. Okay. And, oh, they're bringing back the LAFCO one on dues. They're gonna bring that back once LAFCO gets a look at what's going on as a subcommittee and grant funds. Yeah, and you said about the grant funds and the housing legislation workshop. They're having a workshop on partners, equal, people as an election they're having. That's it? Yeah.
I attended the last two city council meetings. The first one, it didn't get to our agenda item for new business. And the second one did. And Scott, Scott came in, I texted him because I thought it was gonna be a little quicker than it was, but, and it, it was a lively discussion. And there's some good concerns from about six or seven people in the audience that I took note of, and Scott did, too. And we had a, Mr. Reitheimer kind of got really upset at us and called us all idiots for proposing this.
Well, I think, to be more clear, I think he called us freaking idiots.
He did.
Idiots.
The five.
All five of us.
But the vote went down to three to two where they want us to continue to look at it and bring back a more detailed plan. And I think Scott's already working on that.
You know, that's interesting that, that they would do that because I don't remember in all these, in our discussions, at least up here, did we ever talk about putting those things in residential areas? We never did. But that's what they're asking to come back with is a plan to keep it out of residential We never did, but that's what they're asking to come back with, is a plan to keep it out of residential areas.
Well, I think what happened was, Scott had mentioned maybe putting one by our old office, which is in a residential area, but not, you know, semi-residential.
Yeah, that's true.
And then some people applied that to going down like a block further on Anaheim Street, and, you know, they just assumed that it would be put in, in the residential areas, 'cause we haven't really talked about it.
Yeah, you know, based on the, the blogosphere and the.
Right.
The commentaries you see, a lot of people are really concerned about the west side. West side's gonna get the brunt of all this. Well, realistically, where are most of the homeless people?
That's where they're at.
Yeah, the west side. And I know one, one person even said, you'll never see that, you'll never see these portable restrooms in Mesa Verde, because three of the five sanitary district board members are from Mesa Verde. I mean, that's the kind of, you know, fantasy that's out there. And, and again, I thought the plan that we talked about, even at the liaison meetings, was pretty specific about where we're gonna put these things, so.
Well, I think it was gonna be a discussion with the, uh, Homeless Task Force to help us determine the locations.
Yeah, that's, I think.
But I think Scott has a plan, uh, to talk with the businesses on Nineteenth Street, maybe Seventeenth Street, I don't know, and come up with a detailed outline to the city council, what our exact plans are.
Yeah, and I think the Nineteenth Street corridor, the Harbor and Wilson corridor, those are the prime areas for where the homeless people congregate.
But you know, the part that was really wrong, how it came out in the paper, on the front page of the Daily Pilot, and it indicated that these little portables, it's not that little portable, like.
Oh, the picture?
Yeah, the picture. And, and it's, actually has a sink in there, and there's a lot more to it, and, you know. So, um, Scott said that we will be redoing that, so that it looks, people don't understand, they're, they're educated by what that picture looked like. And thinking, oh, it's another little portable, like you do in a sports event.
Yeah, and I think, just to tag on to the thing in the Daily Pilot, I think you all know, we, we've sent a response, an op-ed to the Daily Pilot. Um, I've also asked Scott to, um, send the mayor a letter.
With what?
We're gonna put together a letter to the mayor, expressing our concern about the comments that were made, and that, you know, elected officials need to be working together in this community, not throwing grenades at each other.
Yeah, Regeimer's been after the homeless issue ever since he got on council. He's, you know, he, he, he was following the, the, some of them around who were picking up cans, and, um, you know, and that's where he got a bad taste for recycling, and the recycling, proposed recycling center on Placentia. Because that, that homeless guy made five bucks, and he went in a liquor store, and Regeimer, you know, followed him in the liquor store, probably get a Diet Coke, but, uh, it, you know, he, he's been concerned for a long time about the proliferation of homelessness. I doubt if he goes to the Homeless Task Force, which, you know, the, when we had the guy here, he said the numbers are substantially down. And then the information that we had as we were doing the studies shows that, uh, it doesn't encourage people from out of county, out of state, out of country, homeless people to come here.
Yeah, but to just shut the door on this stuff, I mean, people have to realize, I think, that with all the pressure that's being put on Anaheim and Orange along the Santa Ana River, and all those people moving, all those people aren't gonna go into hotels and motels. They're gonna travel right down the Santa Ana River bed, and they're gonna empty into Costa Mesa. So, there has to be some.
That, that wasn't what, that wasn't what the guy told us from the Homeless Task Force, he said they, they, they stay where they're, where they're used to being.
Right.
And so they'll just find a different place, you know, near the Santa Ana River, if that's, if that's the reason they located there in the first place.
Well, I, I'd encourage Councilmember Regeimer to come over to Moon Park on a Saturday afternoon, or any day, any afternoon, and see what's going on, so. Anyway, just my thought. SDRMA, there was, there was a board meeting this month, but I was at a different event, so I don't have a report. They did, they did announce at SDRMA that we would be doing the, um, return of premiums, I don't remember how we call it, on worker, on the workers' comp program. So, there will be some, hopefully some funds coming, and our mod's down, so we should be getting some return on that. And, uh, not in the property liability section, but in the, uh, workers' comp part of it.
I went to the GWS tenth anniversary, um, which I think was last week. Uh, it, you know, there were, there were, politicians were thicker than fleas on the dogs back there, and they all got to speak, for the most part.
What did you have to say?
I just got recognized, um, as being, as the director. I, I worked on the feasibility study for that project a long, long time ago, and worked on selecting a consultant, and helped, helped them with the design until I retired in '05. Came online after that, but it's the tenth anniversary. They also set a Guinness Book of World Records, and there was a, a guy from Guinness there, from England, and he set up the criteria for how the, the, what the goal was. Uh, and it was ninety million gallons in a day, and they were at one hundred million and eight thousand gallons, so they met the goal, met his goal. He was there, he or a representative was there twenty-four hours a day to watch the clock and watch the, uh, the accumulation of flow. So, you know, he had, he, he was actually from the Guinness team.
Now, is the Guinness Book of World Records have any relation to Guinness beer? I don't, I, I've never thought of that until just now, but.
But it, it, the only, the connection here was the, the beer drinkers contributing to the sanitation district system.
That's, that's, let's don't go there, Director.
My turn?
Yeah, in a minute, 'cause I just thought of something. I gave Nalani a CSDA seminar that I've asked her to sign me up for regarding the basics of Prop 26 and Prop 218. It's a workshop on May thirtieth at Santa Margreto Water District. We've got one next year, right? We're looking at a, we'll need a Prop 218 next year, right? Steve's not in his head, so yeah. So, that, I, I think that might be something we should consider going, if anybody else wants to go.
Orange County San District did vote, um, last month to implement a one point two per, one point one to one point two percent increase in, in their fees, and they'll be hearing that fee structure as an ordinance beginning, I think, at the next board meeting next Wednesday, so. So, there, you know, cost of living and everything included. Pay, pay increases for the, for their staff, and chemicals and energy, and they're able to do it for one point one percent.
Okay, any other meetings?
Yes.
Go.
Let's see, where is it? I wanted to tag on too, that, uh, ISDOC has a luncheon meeting on the twenty-ninth.
Of March.
Of March, that you might consider, March twenty-ninth.
That's the quarterly luncheon?
Yeah, it's a quarterly luncheon.
What day of the week is that?
It's a Thursday, it's always a Thursday, so, you know, if anybody wants to go.
March twenty-ninth?
Say something to Nalani.
Send it to Nalani.
That's true. I think Heather, Heather usually sends out the, Heather Baez sends out the.
Yeah.
Maybe it's coming from that other gal now, I don't know. Gal from East Orange County? Sylvia? Yeah, Prada. So, yeah, she'll let us know when it, when it gets advertised.
And, uh, also, LAFCO had MSRs kickoff of the, of the stakeholders. Did you go to that?
Yeah.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, it was about, about the guy.
Okay, well, okay. And then, also, um, what was the other one? I went to the chamber, uh, actually, Director Ferryman and I went to the train, Chambers Luncheon on the fifteenth of February, and it was at the fairgrounds, and it was excellent, and, uh, they'd spoken homeless, and the city came with all the people that were involved, Muriel, and, and all the necessary people for, and John Stevens got up and talked about the homeless, too. And, uh, it, it was a real good luncheon.
Was that the recognition? Wasn't that the rec, oh, it was the homeless.
Police, police fire recognition was a month ago.
They, what room did they hold that in?
They held it in this new atrium that they have now built, that they'll be having VIP affairs, and it was a sit-down luncheon. Excellent, oh my gosh, you know, we had filet mignon. I mean, I couldn't believe it, the whole thing was just fantastic. And so, um, and Bill Nelson was the speaker, so that was really good. And then on that, uh, one bit President Schaefer just talked about on OCOG, um, that, that one is going to be very good at the, they have water security, the, uh, energy reliance, and, uh, then they had homelessness and the city for the future, you know. So, uh, they've got some good speakers on it, so if any of you can go, you know, it sounds good.
I gotta stop having these meetings on Thursdays, though, I just can't believe they would.
You gotta change your cocktail.
It wasn't till eleven-thirty, so you could've made it.
Probably.
Just change your cocktail. Now, take care of that.
The SARS meeting is coming up on, on March third.
March third is.
Some of our staff are being recognized.
Oh.
Santa Ana River Basin section.
The SARS dinner on March third? Yeah.
That's my, that's what I have to do, March third.
And I'll be flying up to Sacramento for a ledge meeting on Thursday, March first and second. So, that's about it.
Nobody went to Waco last month?
Y'all did.
Oh, yes, we did. Nobody said anything?
All right, um.
We can remember anything?
Any other oral communication, any other direct comments?
Just one thing, uh, Scott, did you get the city council agenda report for that meeting at the, last, on Thursday? So, do you already look at all those pictures? Okay, case, I, I just brought that case, you need to, we could probably do something like this when we send it back from here.
Yeah, I'm just gonna say, thanks to both of you guys for digging in.
We got there about midnight.
Yeah, I appreciate you doing that.
I want to add something else. On that.
I was at the meeting.
Luncheon that I went to for the homeless, they, they gave this out to all the businesses, uh, that were there, and they said they're, they're giving it out so that they could stick it in their window.
What's, what's that say?
No trespassing, soliciting.
Soliciting, and, you know, for the homeless, and then they also had a pers, a business perspective on homelessness, and I'll give that to Scott. Anyway, that was it.
Back to the city council meeting real quick, you know, they record via Granicus. Is there a way to capture a segment of Granicus? Can we extract a segment, or do we have to watch the whole thing? Can you see about getting that recording of the discussion on the, the restrooms? Just that one particular part? The part on council member comments on it, I guess, or whatever.
We have one positive, I think Teresa Drain, from what I, she was kinda positive for, wasn't she?
You know, it, it's such a big issue, and we're gonna get all kinds of comments.
Teresa's gonna be running for city council.
Yes, Caressa. Okay, uh, if there's no other communications or comments, then I'm gonna adjourn us to closed session. Conference of Legal Counsel on Existing Litigation under Government Code 54956.9D1, Coast to the Sanitary District versus Mesa Water District. Okay, so let's adjourn to closed session. Convene us to open session, and on the matter, um, before us in closed session, there is no reportable action taken under, uh, the Conference of Legal Counsel on 54956.9. Okay? With that, I will adjourn us to our March twenty-second meeting. Okay, thank you all.